The Select Board Meeting for April fourteenth, twenty twenty five is ordered. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
I gotta do the pledge first.
Oh, Pledge of Allegiance. Helen, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag, United States of America.
For which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Uh, we can hear you.
Okay, that's good.
March forever.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda for April twenty fourth, twenty, or April fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
I'm moving seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye. Aye.
Approval of the minutes for March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
We will make a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
I moved and seconded. Approve the minutes. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mary Lee?
Uh, on page one, down under Citizens Comments, one, two, three, the fourth, fourth row down. The last three words doesn't need to be there. Doesn't make sense for them in there.
Which one, Mary Lee?
It's the
Fourth line?
Fourth line down, the last three words in that. It makes more sense just to take those right out.
You're talking about, it was suggested cross tra- cross traffic does not stop.
Be placed on Rice Willis Road, yeah.
I think you should say it was suggested a cross traffic does not stop sign be placed on Rice Willis Road and River Street.
That makes sense.
Okay, I'll go on with that.
I see what you're saying. There is something out of context there, yeah, or something. You got that changed, Mike?
Yeah.
The only other thing is on page five. Nine twenty nine, we entered executive session before we made the motion. Very last line. This is entered executive session. But we hadn't made the motion yet.
Yeah, it just needs to be moved.
Right.
I've got that page six. It's a
Well, if you look at the bottom of page five, it says nine twenty nine, enter executive session.
Yep.
And then on page six, the top, it said, I still made a motion to enter executive session. So
Nine.
Those two just need to be foot flopped.
Not necessarily. That's, that, that's a heading. This is just another way of writing the minutes. Nine twenty nine, we entered executive session, and there was the motion to do that.
Yeah.
And then at ten oh five, we exit executive session. There's a motion and vote to do that.
Yeah, this depends on how you look at it.
I think, I think at this point, there's no change necessary.
I don't have anything else.
We got page three. Six lines down, the last, it starts the last sentence. M. Brown questioned why moving ahead with what appears to be incomplete. That doesn't really make any sense. Should be M. Brown questioned why we were moving ahead, what appears to be incomplete.
I can, I'll make a note here and I can go back and look at the tape, listen to the tape.
And then on page five. Did I still made a motion to approve purchase order zero five, three, eight, three, one, two overhead door for fifteen thousand for three garage doors? Wasn't that just one garage door? That we had to do? Wasn't there one left?
They replaced three. They replaced three doors. They were supposed to place two, and they did all three.
Okay.
But I, I didn't remember it was fifteen, fifteen thousand. I thought it was more than that.
Fifteen thousand, bro. One door seems a little high, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know. For whatever reason, I thought they had just done the last door.
Well, I was thinking, check the recording and get clarity, Mike.
That's it.
You got anything, Bob?
I got one thing, and you guys may correct me on this. On page three, under Facility Use Agreement and Alcohol Use in Town Facilities and On Town Properties. The very last line, it says, brief discussion held on the details of the proposed event as well as assurance. License sure comma, etc. Is that an actual word? L. I. C. E. N. S. U. R. E.
It is.
Yes.
Yes, it is an actual word. It's not commonly used, but it is a word.
Not in Fairhaven, Bob.
Well, what is, what, what does that mean? What is that license sure? I'm not even saying it right, am I? What is, what is that, what does that mean?
That means that you're in possession of the proper license for that event.
Okay. That's how they spell it, huh?
Defining it, Ray? Mary Lee?
Yes.
Okay.
I've never seen that word before. License, license sure.
I haven't seen it come up much, but it does exist. But thanks, thank you for being this language for all the words we have.
Thanks for your public interest, Bob.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so.
Anything else, Bob?
All right. No, that's it.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Citizens comments, items not on the agenda. Yes, sir. Could you come forward to the podium and
Yeah.
State your name and residence for the record.
Jim Gilbert. Castleton.
I knew that, Tim, but you had
I understand. I, I just wanted to address the board a little bit about the zoning regulation you talked about concerning fences. Mary Lou brought up that, uh, having, uh, three feet removed off your field is significant for hay operations and so on. And I'd also like to point out that in smaller town lots, uh, it's very significant. If I have to move my garden fence in three feet from my line, that takes quite a lot of my garden away. And I, I think that in the past, the zoning regulation had been that, uh, if it's fences not over six feet, that you don't need a permit for it. And if it's your property, you can put a fence on it. And I think it should remain that way. Uh, see this more of a, and I understand their concern maintaining a fence and so on, but I've been here forty years or so and I haven't heard of a problem. And it looks more like a solution in search of one. Uh, sometimes, uh, city neighbors, uh, put up a fence between them. And they mutually agree to have that fence there and, and work on it themselves. Uh, I don't see that that should be disallowed to have each of them have a fence with a six-foot strip in between. It seems kind of ridiculous. Uh, so I would just like to support that idea that, uh, we'd be careful about overregulating such things.
I'm inclined to agree with you, but I'm only twenty percent of the board. Twenty percent more over there, so that discussion is not done yet, Tim.
Okay. I, I just thought it was a good point that you brought up, and it's also a good point for town people. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else for citizens' comments? Mary?
Mary McIntyre. Route four in Castleton. Last time, uh, you met, you, um, discussed, uh, facilities agreement for the use of alcohol. And I wondered if there was a policy that, or any movement on that, we've gotten anywhere?
Not at this point.
Okay. Any idea where, when that might be settled on?
No, but I'll put it down as an action item. We need to pursue that directly on that.
Because for our cash bash, our advertising is going on and our, our sales have begun, but we're looking to, um, put in bigger ad in, in, uh, uh, Roy's paper. And if we could, we're gonna adjust our ad, now would be the time to do it. And, um, so, yeah, I guess we are waiting for a decision.
Good.
Any questions?
No, not at this point.
So, come back next meeting, maybe? Is this something that has to be decided at a meeting?
We can't take any action except at a meeting, but what we can do is make sure that everyone's prepared to discuss it and make a decision, and we'll put it on the agenda.
For the next meeting.
For the next meeting.
All right. We've got three hundred tickets to sell. We are making progress, but I do think that, uh, if we have to change advertising, it would be helpful, um, to be able to do it. And I do think that, uh, that may draw in some more buyers. But, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Citizens' comments?
Brian.
Brian, right?
Is there any way that we can have an introduction to the guests through tonight?
We can do that.
Dave's in the back.
Dave, would you come up to the podium and tell us who you are?
Yeah, sure.
That way the Zoom mic can pick it up.
Uh, David Blow, I'm a longtime professor at Castleton, BTSU Castleton now, and it's my intro to journalism class here, which we come once a semester. Uh, so they get a taste of local government and, uh, they're hoping it doesn't go three hours, I'm pretty sure.
How are we, Dave?
How are we?
Disappointed.
Have you seen, I wouldn't keep them.
Have you seen this agenda?
I have, yeah.
Yeah.
But you can, you can
We're cautiously optimistic. How's that?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder, Ray. Okay, Recreation Department. John, you're up.
Everyone's, uh, seen my, my letter to the board. Um, one of the big items, obviously, for this month is the adventure camp planning and, uh, associated budgetary process. Mike, did you share the budget items from the last meeting?
I did. I think I put it there. Like, there was a note saying they were working, that they, it was supposed to be cost neutral, so their, their, their budget, their fees had to pay for it, so they, they worked out a budget.
So suffice to say, um, we made good progress with the directors, um, on the budgetary items. And if we are able to adequately, um, populate the adventure camp this year, fifty campers drives a certain um, number of staff, which will bring us out just about cost neutral, and sixty campers will bring us about the same. So, um, it's a process that we've started at the conclusion of last year's adventure camp and, um, being the first time that the directors have had to go through with it, there, it hasn't been without its, um, perks, we'll say, but going forward, now that they've been through it, it should be much easier, uh, future seasons for them to be able to work that budget out, which is, um, you know, there's a lot of firsts for that, and, uh, they are taking the responsibility for that. Um, our fitness and wellness center is off to a good start. Um, that build has really gone well. There's a lot of um, enthusiasm for that. Our first class of move with Eccentrics had, um, fifteen participants in it. So many that, uh, we found out that that room with the, uh, exercise equipment that was re- still remained in the room isn't going to be able to stay there, so, um, didn't expect to have fifteen, fifteen folks in the, in the actual class, but it's a good harbinger for what hopefully is going to happen. We have three additional, um, instructors that are coming online between now and the beginning of, of May. So, uh, the, the next, um, is gonna be a yoga slash Pilates combination taught by Jill Gucci, Jill Batagriano. She, um, is a local instructor. She's actually from Rutland. They, she just purchased a home up by, uh, off of the Stables Road. And, uh, that'll start late April. And then we have, uh, Jen Morrison Taylor, who's gonna be, um, starting her class, and Sabrina Hans. Um, softball, I've had some questions, uh, addressed about softball, and we are going through the final, um, evaluation about whether or not we will in fact have a Castleton team this year. Um, our signups have been, uh, kind of below expectations. One of the problems, we talked about this last year, and it hasn't been resolved. This year, we, uh, are in the Rutland Recreation Softball League for Girls, and the league encompasses grades three through six. And last year, it worked out well because we had a strong team, mostly as fifth and sixth grade girls. And we were, we only lost one game, and that was by one run. And the girls had an outstanding season, but a lot of those girls aged out, and now we are left with a team mostly composed of very young third and fourth graders and young fifth graders. And so inherent with this league is the age difference between a, a girl in a, in third grade, you know, that's just very small on average, very tiny, as opposed to a girl in the sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade, that can be basically fully grown and powerful and able to rocket a softball back to the pitcher, third baseman. So there's a safety, um, concerned inherent in this league. And that's basically where I'm still evaluating with our new coach, Mandy Daly, on whether or not, um, we are going to be able to play teams such as, in the case of Fairhaven, they had eighteen, um, third and fourth graders, thereabouts, and eighteen fifth and sixth graders, thereabouts. And so they split their teams into separate teams. So the third and fourth graders are gonna play a totally separate schedule. And the fifth and sixth graders are gonna continue to play in this grade three through six league. And at this point, I'm still not satisfied that it would be a safe um, playing environment for our young team to play against those fifth and sixth graders. So those considerations are still being made. And, you know, I'm gonna make whatever decision has to be made. If there are a couple different options, we can, um, look to have our girls who are, there's basically seven third and fourth graders on the team, and then there's three or four fifth and sixth graders. Um, we can apply to the other teams that have split and have strictly third and fourth grade teams to be able to try to put together a, um, a season. There won't be as many opponents to play because there's not a lot of splits teams, but they'll be adequate. Um, but those teams have to agree to play our team, which still does have those three or four older girls, fifth and sixth graders. So the other option is, Fairhaven has offered to absorb our players into their teams. And, um, while that's not the ideal situation, it is an option to make sure that the girls do get to play softball this spring. So that'll be made between now and Wednesday. The schedule from Rutland Rec will be coming out on Wednesday.
That would be eliminating the third and fourth graders completely?
No, no. Fairhaven has a third and fourth grade teams. They have two third and fourth grade teams. They could absorb them onto those teams. And then you know, it would be more like a, um, inner squad scrimmage. And at the time of the meeting last week with Rutland Rec, Mill River was talking about splitting their girls as well, third and fourth, fifth and sixth. But as I understand since that meeting, I'm told that that hasn't happened. So it really, none of this is ideal. You know, it would be nice to see adequate and equal, um, emphasis put into girl sports in the county. Um, as opposed to the, the boys playing baseball. And mind you, the girls can play baseball. But that's not to say that the Rutland County Little League prevents the girls from playing. They can play. But there is an obvious, um, inadequacy in terms of the overall, um, uh, management of the, the girl sports and the girl, and the boy sports. So with the boys, you know, the signup is all done through Rutland. They collect one fee, they set up all the games, they arrange all the umpires, we provide them with fields, you know, the, the local uh, localities provide them with fields, and it's almost all on automatic. And from my experience with coaches such as Lee Jamison and Matt Ryan and those folks, they report out that that is, has been for many years, a very satisfying arrangement. Um, but, I mean, this issue of the, the three, grade three through six league, I know, just starting last year, this was one of the first meetings I attended over on rec, and it was brought up then by our, our then coach and other coaches from the league, and it was supposed to be addressed over the offseason, and it just, I don't think it's a priority right now. So, um, that's the deal with softball, and hopefully that, um, clears up some of the, um, confusion regarding softball for girls. But, um, other than that, um, we do, we have had some added interest in renting of space at the center, um, by three different situations. You know about the potential for, um, District One. But we do have, uh, two other entities interested in renting, and we're going through the process now with um, figuring out the contracts through remote leagues of cities and towns. We've been talking about this, and now we do have renters lined up, and now we just need to work with Mike and actually figure out what, how the contracts read, you know, what they cover and the rental agreement. So, um, there should be some um, monthly support for the operating expenses coming in through, um, um, long-term rentals in addition to the additional programming. So.
Just the board's aware that's, I, I sent that to our attorney to review the, the model policy from the LCG and what they recommend, what she recommends that. Cause it's the model, it doesn't mean that it can't be tailored to our needs.
Any other que- any questions for John on his report, concerning his report?
Good.
Okay, Bob, anything concerning John's report before we move on to possible appointments? Okay, so it's been, we have a request for an appointment, meaning the recommission from Jennifer Morrison Taylor, and we have anecdotal notification that a gentleman named Eric Pulver wants to join the recommission.
Yes.
Is, is Eric here?
I don't see him, no.
Okay, and we have nothing in writing from Eric either. Um, so let me finish before anyone answers. So at this point, it's my recommendation, since we, even though we have not updated the, the Charter of Rights resp- responsibilities, we have every intention of doing so, to say that there will always must be a, um, majority of Castleton residents on the board. And at this point, if we appoint Jennifer and we do not appoint Eric, there would be, there would no longer be a Castleton majority. So at this point, I would suggest that we delay this appointment until such time as we hear from Mr. Pulver or another Castleton resident that wishes to join the board. So that's my suggestion to the board, but I don't know what the board's pleasure is.
I agree.
Yeah, we just need a letter from Eric. He actually does want to join.
And it's not that we're not, um, inclined, inclined or disinclined to appoint Jennifer. I just am reluctant to do so until we know we can guarantee a majority of residents of Castleton on the board, or on the, on the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, I see your, I see your logic there, and I understand that it's, he is very interested and intends on doing. He just needs to follow through with the letter, and
We need to see some evidence of
The move with it the next board meeting, so.
So he can either present himself personally or write a letter and but at this point in time, I'm reluctant to proceed. Uh, just one moment. So anything from the board concerning this, Bob? Do you understand what I'm suggesting?
No, I agree. I agree with you one hundred percent, Dick.
Okay. So, um, Jennifer would like to speak, but she needs to come up to the podium.
Okay.
And I'm not sure just what the appropriate way to say your last name is. Hope you can help me with that. Is it Morrison Taylor?
Sure, yes, Morrison Taylor. Um, wasn't really planning on saying anything, but I'm just curious, what is the, could we have twenty-four hours to encourage him to get something written?
We can't do this except at a regularly scheduled board meeting.
So it would be another two weeks?
Correct.
Right, well, I'll be patient and just keep working away, as long as it's okay that I continue to do what I'm doing in the building.
Absolutely.
And bringing in anybody who wants to help create a beautiful space for the environment there. Um, I always love, uh, you know, uh, networking and having people learn how to do things that way.
Please don't misunderstand what I'm saying today, because my intent is not to make you feel like your effort is unwelcome, because it certainly is.
Okay.
But, uh, we are trying to make sure that we get this right and
Oh, no, I get it.
And I wrote myself a note that I've got to get with Mr. Brown when he gets back from Iceland and get off my you-know-what and get these bylaws amended. So I will do that as well.
My husband would be happy to help you with that.
Well, it's not a big, it's not a heavy lift. It's a very simple thing to do. I just gotta take the hour to sit down with Mr. Brown and get it done, and he's not in the country right now, so I'm not sure when he's gonna be back, but.
If I have Eric Pulver on the phone, would you take a telephone testimony? I got his, I got his number right here.
I could write for her.
I think, I don't think it's gonna stop you from helping out, is it?
No, no, it's not gonna stop me.
Let's do, let's stick with Plan A.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, let's set like it not, let's set a precedent that we either need to have in person or a letter.
Yeah, let's stick with Plan A.
The problem is, is that Josh is out of town and John isn't there all the time, and I don't know about the key situation. Mike, you told me the other night that I can't have a key to get in and out because I'm not on the board yet. And I have a lot of work to do, and I have a lot of energy, and I I have events of life in other states that, uh, will take me away, and I would kind of like to get this going before you have your summer program happening and, um, also the big event in August. I mean, I kind of have a timeline of that and wanting it to be really spectacular for your whole school, um.
We still have to do background checks and, so, so there's still some stuff that needs
There must be a way to make this, make this work though, isn't there?
Oh, yeah, I, I can do that.
I can.
Yeah, we'll make it work. Jennifer, we'll find a way to make it work, okay?
Yes, I love a yes.
Great.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
I'll talk to, I made a note for myself to talk to Mike tomorrow. We'll figure out a way to make it work.
Figure out a way to get her in the building when she wants to do herself.
She needs to be there.
Okay.
We always like people that are trying to make a difference.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, um, that board before we move on?
Oh, no, no, no. I, I've been working with the
All right, uh, let's talk about the annual financial plan for the town highway.
Yes, you're aware, um, Martha, Don, Martha Clifford, Mary Drogie, Jim Thomas, Kristen Ross, Dean Dugan, and the highway foreman are on Zoom.
Does anybody have their hand up specific to Recreation Department nominee review before we move on?
Martha, did you hear that?
Uh, yeah, I did. I'm, I'm not sure I have any other comments. I'm, um,
Then we're gonna move on, Martha. Thanks for hanging out, though.
Yep.
All right, so now we're gonna talk about the annual financial plan for town highways.
So this, uh, annual finance, annual is the key word. Um, we do this every year, and the stats, I gave the board stat copies of the statute last meeting, but this, basically, the state wants to ensure that the town can afford three hundred dollars per mile, um, to, to cover class, for maintenance of class one, two, and three roads. Um, this form takes the, the money that the state gives us for those classes, uh, class one, two, and three. Um, and it also at the bottom, the, under the expenses, breaks out what we spend on winter maintenance, non-winter maintenance, uh, paving, our equipment fund, um, and sidewalks and bridges. And that's not everything. That's just the big items, and it bounces itself out. So basically, the state can say, yes, the town of Castleton can afford um, to to maintain the roads that we have.
So what do we need, a motion to approve this?
Yes, please. And then there's a place for everybody to sign.
I would make a motion to approve the annual financial plan for the town highways. Um for the town of Castleton for fiscal year twenty-six, beginning on seven, one, twenty-five, ending on six, thirty, twenty-six. Do we need the sum?
We're moving second to approve the financial plan for the town highways, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye, Bob?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so there's gonna be, this document will be available to you at the town office if you wanna come by and sign it at your convenience, Bob?
Yep, will do.
Okay. So we're gonna talk about maintenance of private roads.
I would defer that with Mr. Chairman to the highway foreman, uh Jeff Data's on, who did the research on this?
Okay, uh Jeff, could you give us the Reader's Digest version of what you've discovered in your research on these private roads?
Uh, yes, sir, um. We start with uh Parker Road um off of uh Pond Hill. That is a town-owned road all the way to Pulteney. Uh, we maintain to the uh just past the driveway of the first house, there's nothing further. Uh, Gump Road is, is, is a private area, uh there is a manhole at the end of the road that we maintain to ensure that we have access to it year-round, uh no matter what. And Higgins Road is owned halfway down and it's maintained just to that first uh house where we can have a turnaround. It's a, it's a hill that you can't turn around right at the, at the town lot.
Okay, so out of those three, I'd say Parker Road and Higgins Road, there's really nothing to discuss, is that, you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Gump Road, we don't actually own the road, but we do, what do we do, we plow it and grade it, fix manholes?
Yes, sir.
So, would it make sense for us to get an easement to do that so that we're we can't be denied access to that manhole, I realize everything's being done in good faith on a handshake right now and there's nothing broke, but just to protect the town in the future, should we pursue getting an easement to, to access that manhole? In exchange for that easement, will agree to plow the road or something along those lines?
Yeah, definitely, if, if you see the notes on there, I've been doing some research and if, if the state doesn't have it recorded uh that the, the, a road was given up or added, then it doesn't ma- they don't, there's no hearsay, there's no handshakes, there's, there's none of that. So if you go on and, and look at one of those sites and it, it has our road on it, it wha- whatever is hearsay, it doesn't, doesn't matter, the, the state pays us to maintain those roads like Mike was talking about, the annual report.
Yeah, and I understand the Gump Road is not a town road and we don't get reimbursed from the state for that road, is that correct?
Correct.
So we need an easement though, so that we always have access to that manhole.
So what I'm saying is, I think we sh- we should, in exchange for an easement to access that manhole, we should probably only agree to plow it. That way, if there's any serious problems with the infrastructure of that road, we may be able to reach an arrangement with them, but we're not legally required to repair that road if there's a catastrophic failure. That's my thought, what do you think, Mike?
I agree with that and, and I did pass this on to Merrill as well, saying I'm probably coming back to her looking for an easement so that we can access our infrastructure, I didn't talk to her about plowing versus grading, but I think
I'm thinking if we limit it to plowing, that would be probably what the landowners biggest would give them the biggest help and if we swing in there with a grader when we're driving by, there's nothing wrong with being a good neighbor. But I don't feel we should be legally required to do so. You agree with that?
I do.
Yes.
So.
Since there's a sewer infrastructure there, is there anything that gives us legal right to access it anyway? Regardless if there's an easement or not?
I don't. I don't dare a- answer that, cause um I'm not sure legally, I guess.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, um, I don't know, you know, normally for utilities, there's an easement that comes with utilities and this is a utility, just as one of those you know, dear, years gone by was probably handshake deal.
And you have Merrill researched that and once again, I have no problem with being a good neighbor, that's, you know, what we should be, but uh
Yeah, I mean, if we keep it plowed, it's better than having to plow four feet at once.
Yeah.
Should they decide themselves?
People living on that road would appreciate having the road plowed, I'm just saying that, you know, we wanna limit our exposure as well.
It's gonna take deed research um and minutes of the select board meetings to see if we can find anything. That, that's what Merrill's gonna want too, she's, I, cause when I talked to her, she's like, probably do a little deed research to see if something was written into a property years ago.
There's already an easement.
Well, we need to do this right, so, you know, as long as it's not a hundred thousand dollar legal bill, which it won't be. Um, I think we should do this right.
Yep.
Anything else on town roads at this point, Mr. Foreman?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Are you prepared to move on? Let's talk about a ditching bucket and rest for the excavator.
I would defer that to Jeff as well.
We're up there, Mr. Road Foreman.
Alright, uh, yeah, they are currently on the backup wrist. Um, the setup that they have, or the one that just broke and the one that they're back up. Uh, it, it's, it's uh, it, the way it connects allows more play. I, I spoke with Mike Smith about this and he, he kinda gave me the breakdown that ditching and digging are two completely different uh methods. And a digging bucket puts a significant amount of stress on the wrist. With, with that being said, it gets sloppier faster, worn out faster. Um, the quick connect, uh gieft coupler, that allows uh the buckets to be switched out and maintains a, at least a more rigid, um uh, I, I guess, working, so you're not getting as much as that uh that play with the bucket and the, and the rest to create any uh, I, I guess, it slows the wear down.
The key point in this one is, one's already broken, we're on the backup right now and we got, we're going into summer projects and without having these buckets.
Um, the one's non-reparable.
Yeah, it's broken, um, so I've talked with Mike Smith um about this, you know, the ditching bucket has its purpose and the, and a digging bucket has a purpose, so this these vendors were looked at, um, the one that, G Stones doesn't have anything in there for the forty-eight inch gieft tilt. Uh ditching bucket, cause it's twenty-two weeks away and it was more money. So I, I didn't put it in there, cause it was almost like a write-off, um, that you wouldn't even consider it, but the, they do have the forty-eight inch uh ditching bucket for that and set, and still seven weeks away and we're starting into construction season now.
So we need it, we need the ditching bucket and the digging bucket.
Yeah. We need to, we, we have a digging bucket, right, the, the digging was on there, right, um, Jeff?
Yes, they, they can both be used right now. Um, we're just being a little ginger um about how we're using it, just so we can ensure that we have an excavator that works until we can, you know, get a different setup on there.
Well, I talked to Evan this morning and he said the, the ditching bucket's out, um, but, so we've got basically the the digging bucket that we have and we're starting into these ditching, these uh grant projects and you need the ditching bucket and so we, we're seven, seven weeks out to get the darn thing right now, so.
Seven weeks out to get what, the ditching bucket?
Yeah, the ditching.
What about the digging bucket that's on this list?
That's two weeks out.
Okay. And if we purchase this, this will eliminate the issue with the wrist being worn when it's using a digging bucket.
Yeah.
Which will in turn make our equipment last longer.
That's the, that's, that's why we, and we got Mike Smith involved, cause he does this for a living and outside of here even, um, and he's like, these are good quality products that aren't gonna wear out as fast.
Argue with Mike Smith about something like that. So what's your recommendation, Mr. Farm, Mr. Town Highway Foreman, buy, buy the bolts?
Yeah, yeah, well, you can, as soon as you put that quick coupler on, the items that we have won't match up with it. So if the quick coupler happens, you have to get the digging bucket and the ditching bucket.
We're, we're gonna keep, we're planning on keeping going with the ditching bucket or the digging bucket we have right now. Until this stuff comes in, we're just gonna have to ginger, just not break it, that's all. We have nothing then.
Can that be saved in case it needs to get switched back in case we break the coupler or something like that in the future?
You'd have to, yeah, take the coupler back.
Uh, yeah, but if, if the coupler breaks and we're in a bind and it's twenty-two weeks to get a new coupler.
Yeah.
We can put the old ditching bucket back on.
I wanna say yes, cause it's just replacing that.
Bolting it in.
Yeah.
So, his recommendation is to purchase both these items.
The ones that are hiding.
I'm gonna ask you where the money's coming from.
It's out of their, on their operating budget.
We have that in the budget?
We're not, I mean, it's not, y- yes, it's, but it's not, it doesn't stay for ditching bucket, it's for equipment and stuff, so, um.
That's what I mean, and there's money in there for tools and equipment and it will cover this.
Correct.
Okay. You wanna go for that?
I can, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty-four inch gieft H D digging bucket and coupler hydraulic installation kit. From Champlain Valley Equipment for six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And forty-eight inch Craig tilt ditching bucket from G Stone Commercial for seven thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents.
Second.
We're moving second, any more discussion? All in favor?
I do, I, well, not necessarily on that, but can we just make sure that from now on, we're not caught seven, you know, when we got something that's broken, maybe look a little earlier in the season? To see.
All in favor? Aye.
Bye. Bye.
Motion carries, alright, uh. We're gonna move on. Prime power for the new salt shed. I looked at Green Mountain Bar's proposal and, you know. I mean, it is what it is.
It's gonna change a little bit, um, I, I believe I'll ju- I'll give a preface to this, um, so because of the new salt sheds are gonna go in kinda over the existing footprint. Um, and we, but we had to move the sand pile where the pole was that exist, that did exist, it doesn't now, it's been taken down. Um, was not in a prime spot, especially if a guideline had to be put on it, cause it, but where the limited our space for the sand, so Jeff's been working with Green Mountain Power and they've agreed to put a forty-five foot pole in closer to the road and they've marked it out, it's marked out there now. That doesn't need the guidelines. And keeps it in line with that pole that's on the Hattica side and we don't have to ask the Hatticas to go under their property. Um, but we will get it to, the power will get to this pole and then it's a two hundred amp service according to Jeff, that will go to the new salt shed and there's also a well there, so I asked that, whatever we put in for panel and power, we'll be able to uh operate that pump right there for that well, um, cause it, last time it was used, it was viable water. You know, so we need to use that, that well if there we can, um, so, but Jeff's done all the work on it, so if you have any questions, I would probably just defer it to him, but um, he did say today that we might get a different cost proposal, but I'll let him explain that.
So at this point, that's single face power, correct?
Yes.
Well, we can't do anything till we get the correct cost anyway, so.
Oh, that's, that's, Jeff, is that true, that you, there could be a different cost coming in?
Yes, there is, I got the, the, I, I didn't even find out where it was going until this morning. Uh, Zach from Green Mountain Power, um he, he sent me a text uh about the cost and I said that, that's not really gonna work, so he is putting together a formal proposal and as soon as I have that, I can pass it along. Um, the text is, it's ballpark of that number, so it's, it's nothing you know, it's, it's not gonna be drastic swing one way or the other.
At this point, this isn't a gating item, it doesn't affect our critical path on this project, right?
No, correct.
Um, okay. So do you need, you don't need any action from us on this now, this is mainly to make it, uh, keep us aware of what's going on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you don't need anything more, Jeff, and you don't need anything more, Mike, I'm gonna move on.
Alright.
Stormwater issue at the Green Mountain Church of Christ.
That's all, Jeff.
Dave, Mr. Highway Foreman, you're up again.
Alright. Um, well, essentially you have, um uh, do you have a, the map with uh the grades on it by any chance?
I did not see a map with grades on it.
The, the one you sent me today, Jeff, no, they don't have that, they don't have that one.
No, alright, well, the the, I guess, long and short of it is, everything is pitching away from the building to the neighbors. Uh, property, I guess that would be on the east. Uh, and then it, it kinda funnels that way and then funnels at the very end back towards the the west side. So it's kind of where that, they're pooling water is, it's, it, it's basically being funneled there. Um, there, there's an elevation change briefly between the sidewalk. Um, and what appears to be um existing of about an, an inch maybe. It's kinda torn up down there, so it's, it's hard to to really, you know, get a good mark on it.
Um, just to clarify for the board, coming off the sidewalk looking back towards the church, when you, when you exit the sidewalk down into their parking lot, it, it drops a little bit right there.
So, so the, the numbers are, um from the building to the property is a, that's a fourteen inch drop. Um, and from the, the, I guess, the entrance of the building to the west side of the sidewalk is a twenty-one inch drop. So there's some, some significant, um it, it sounds crazy, but there's some significant uh movement there.
Like the ground that goes this way, then all of a sudden it goes that way and putting a catch basin in to ca- capture that water to, to manipulate that ground to get the water to shed to that catch basin. It's, this is not a simple fix. And that stuff that's coming off the building, off the roof of their building, cause it's a long building. Um, and, and off the existing pavement, it's, it's hard to for us to take something and say that's our problem at this point, but uh I talked to Jeff today and said, well, could we put the catch basin in the middle? Instead of off to the side, can it go in the middle of the drive where it seems to be where water, water wants to go now? And I think the answer was yes, it's just gonna, it's gonna take some wear and tear, cause it's gonna be driven over, people are gonna drive over it.
Yeah, I mean, and you're, they're, they're, they're not be able to tie into anything, so you, you know, the, the, there is a significant amount of water that comes off that roof and goes down there. Uh, that basin could fill up and create a, a little pond there, um, you know, it, there, there's you know, that, that's probably, it would help, is it the answer? Probably not, probably a lot of site work uh should be done.
Well, at this point, you don't need any action from us, right?
No, this is just a follow-through with uh our due diligence, that, that it's, it's not a sidewalk thing. Uh, you know, that, that's my understanding, I've been in touch with uh the engineers from the state. Um, they had some good suggestions as well. Um, but the one thing we can't do is tie into their storm drain system or work in there right away.
I would say if, if the select board agrees that there's some culpability uh on, on the town, from the town based on the sidewalk being put in, that for us to go do this work, this is not something that we're, we're accustomed to doing, it's almost, if the board agrees that there's some responsibility on our part, that maybe it's a, a come up, negotiate with a number for them and say, well, town pays you this much money and you guys get it fixed, but we walk away, just like this, what you're saying up on um, there, and say we have no future uh liability. this, what you're saying up on, um, there, and say we have no future, uh, liability for this at that point, because this is, I mean, the wa, this isn't like this thing is perfectly level or smooth, it, the water pitches back and forth on that, and we didn't do that. The sidewalks didn't do that.
What about, um, yeah, why am I drawing a blank here? Never mind. I think it's, if the board is agreeable, I'll go ahead and have a conversation with Jeff offline.
What about gutters on the building? If a lot of the water's coming off the building, couldn't they put gutters and direct it towards the back?
Well, they, they could, Rob, and the issue is where it's outside of the right of way, and it's a state right of way. We, all we can implore is that they do what helps solve the problem, we can't make them do it.
Yeah.
But they're saying that this was caused because of the sidewalk was put in at a higher elevation than it used to be.
All right, I don't totally agree with that, because there was always water in that driveway when you drove in before that sidewalk was installed. So what I would like to do, if the board is agreeable, is take this offline. I'll talk to Jeff, I'll talk to you. Rob, you're welcome to attend if you would like.
I don't feel that I can view this whole situation from a, from an open seat.
Or Mr. Brown, we can't have three of us without warning a meeting, but any two of us could have a conversation with Jeff. Jeff, I'd like you to take a walk with me around that parking lot someday, and, uh, well, I'll tell you what I remember, having lived here for over forty years. And, um, then we can go from there, because there's some things that I think we need to discuss, but I don't think this is the proper venue for that. At this point, in fact.
I don't see, I did invite, um, members of the church to this meeting if they are zooming in, I don't see them here.
Well, at this point, I don't, I'm not saying that we're not gonna help them out. I am saying that there's some things that we need to iron out before this board authorizes any expense. And I'll be happy to do that research if you guys are agreeable.
I'm, I'm not getting involved in this one.
I understand. I just wanted to throw it out there in case you did want to.
I don't think it's appropriate.
So Jeff, I'll be giving it, I'll send you a, a shout-out tomorrow, we'll figure something out.
All right, sounds good.
All right, so we move on. What I do with my agenda. Tale of town property.
And I guess in, in light of some information I found today about the the water truck that international we've got, and, um, and what our mechanic talked to us about for the Ford F- three fifty that had the engine well, that I would ask to defer this to the next meeting, because it stays in April, because our policy says it has to come before the board in April and October for sale of things like the trucks and, you know, that type of thing, so. Um, Evan, our mechanic has sent me all the photos and information and background on what's there and out there for sale now, or that what they want to sell, and now he has to finish the one for the water truck and that three fifty, so instead of nickel and diming, I think it, we can defer it to the next meeting, it'd be best.
Then we'll move on to town lands.
All right, uh, town land discussion, um, so I was approached a couple of weeks before the last meeting, um, for somebody that wanted to, was inquiring, I guess, about the sale of those three ten acre parcels at the top of Crystal Heights. And so I just wanted to have that discussion with the board, and I not, not to asking you to sell the property, um, but to give some thought about that, maybe have a discussion at some point about, um, what, what you might want to do with that property, because I know sewer, um, being brought up, uh, Crystal Heights could end up increasing the value to the property, at least the one that's closest to Crystal Heights. Um, so there, just open, so I can answer people when they come to me and say, is this for sale, and I just say, I
Was an offer made, or?
I, I told them if they, if they truly want to have a discussion, then they should, uh, put a purchase and sales agreement on it, and so you have something to kind of dive, dive into. I asked our assessor to give me what she thinks the assessed value of the property is without the sewer on it. Um, and she has not provided that at this point, so, um, there's not a lot, not a lot of discussion we had, but um, I, I have not received a purchase and sales agreement from that person.
I think it would be wise to ask our assessor a two-part question. What it would be worth? As, as is now with no, no, with no access to public sewer, and what, what those three parcels would be if there was public sewer available at the top of that hill, because I think the difference might be worth discussion.
Oh, it's gonna be significant.
The other question, I'm not sure if they can be subdivided, but they're ten acre parcels, so it, it's just another discussion that could happen, I guess.
Yeah, ten one acre lots.
I think, I think we need, I think we need to know all the variables before we
Yep.
can make a decision, but we certainly can have a discussion as soon as we know more than we know now.
Correct.
And I, I have, I owe Karen Oakman, our zoning administrator, a visit on it anyway.
So if you have no objections, we'll move on.
Nope.
The board has no.
There's a question, there's a statement on Zoom, if you're willing to take it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
So, or Kristen?
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, so, can you say your name, please?
Yes, I'm Kristen Ross. Uh, I am a resident of Poltony, but I work at, um, BTSU Castleton University. And I just wanted to share with the board that, um, my colleagues and I are doing some ecological studies uh, in two of those three ten acre parcels. And if the board would like more information about some of the ecological value that, of the species there, I would be happy to share in writing or come to a different meeting and present you with information. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but we are, are just briefly doing a, um, study of black-legged ticks and invasive, uh, non-native understory vegetation there. Um, and so we have some temporary plots set up in there. Um, so I can give you species lists, I can give you a whole bunch of stuff if you're interested. Um, so there's, uh, we're accessing it through, um, Jim's property there, I think he was on the call. Maybe he's not, I don't know if he's still there, but, um, anyway, just wanted to give the board some information about, uh, some of the natural, uh, value that's in, in part of those parcels there, especially the well ends that are in there. If you have questions, I can field those, but I just wanted to sort of give you an FYI that um, we have, uh, thirty-seven little plots set up in there, just temporarily, uh, for looking for, taking some ticks off the property for you too, so.
If you would want to give us a brief written report, I think that that's, you know, more knowledge we have is always good, so if you would be willing to provide us with that at this point, I don't see unless the board disagrees with me, that, that your presence at a meeting at this point is required, although it might be something we would welcome in the future.
Yeah, any, anytime, um, I can send my information to you, and, um, we'd be happy to come. Uh, you know, even give a little ten-minute presentation of what we find there. We, we were out there and mostly in June and July last summer, so um, we have a slideshow and some maps and things like that, I could, I could share, and I'd be happy to give a species list, but I, I can write up something and send it your way.
A brief written report at this point would be an excellent place to start, I think. Do you agree with that, board?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else before we move on? The acceptance of property gifted to the town. Is that, uh, property up on, uh, yeah, Birdseye Road?
It is.
Are there anything new on that, Mike?
Um, nothing. I, I did talk with Ed Davis, um, and, uh, I let him know that I've reached out to our attorney, um, doesn't sound like there's anything that's really gonna be complicated about this. Uh, she, Meryl did say that there probably should be some deep research done to make sure there's means, or, you know, we take over property that has an issue. Um, but she does recommend a survey, uh, that it's done, so it delineates where that property is. And I, when Ed talked to me, he also said that he'd be, he's he's entertaining, uh, giving land to the town for an easement, uh, farther up the road where, I forgot the name of it, where where it turns, where John LaCarter used to live up there. Um, there's a road that's, it's kind of grown over now, but it accesses the trails that you can't get to from the lower section, and so he's, I think that would be good for the town as well, so.
So I'm just curious, what, let's say that we put the parking area in there, which I'm all for. But let's say Ed sells the property around it, and those people decide to shut it off, so are we just stuck with a parking area? And no use of the trails?
Unless he writes something into the, the agreement that still gives
Yeah, is there something that we can make sure if we do get an agreement with him that we have that in there, that if he does sell the property, the town of Castleton still has the right to allow visitors' access to it. I don't know if they can tag that onto the deed or not, but
Certainly a conversation.
And I'm all for free property, believe me, but.
Well, it's not so much the free property that I like, the idea of having access, a place to park and access to the summit of Birdseye would be huge for this town.
As long as it doesn't get sold and shut down.
Agreed.
But, but you can't access the state land from that parking area where he's talking about.
Yeah.
You can from that road that he's willing to have a discussion with us about, so that would be, that would still allow access to the state.
Yeah, because that would be an easement.
Yeah.
So we should continue the conversation is the bottom line on this.
Just wanted to give you an update on what we're.
Your concern is well noted and appropriate, though, Rob.
Because that property is for sale, I believe.
Is it? I didn't know that.
It has been for sale.
For a long time, yeah.
Well, everything's for sale, right?
Like five hundred acres, I believe.
Yeah. Well, it's actively for sale, I should say.
Okay.
Anybody have any money back there? You want to buy five hundred acres?
And gift it to the
Pass the hat, pass the hat around.
You have use of that trail to the town?
It used to be a ski area a long time ago.
Well, we did have it on the agenda. I, for some reason, I've read this agenda like eight times, and I totally missed it. Sorry, Mary, I have to apologize to Mary McIntyre. Um.
Well, I didn't, I don't have like a, all right, go ahead.
Well, I just, we have a discussion on here to, to, uh, I guess at this point in time, we have to do, we have to discuss whether we even think it's worth considering. And if, um,
I thought that we had decided the last time, last meeting, that it would be on a case-by-case basis, but.
Yes, I think we did do that. So we haven't done anything about coming up with a agreement for a use agreement to allow alcohol in a controlled manner and a case-by-case basis on town property.
Negative.
I would like to see for this particular um, bash, ask we highly consider allowing alcohol. After all, they are working to try to replace our gym floor.
Can we do that without a policy in place? Can we make an exemption ahead of time? So that she can advertise?
We'd have to actually look at the town policy controlling the use of alcoholic beverages on town property. There's a policy that we passed as a board quite some time ago.
It says no.
And it just says none, but I don't know if it provides for any exceptions.
You guys have our all.
Is that a policy or an ordinance? It's a policy.
It's a policy.
So we can change that policy if we so desire as a board.
Well, yeah, we can cha, can we, so would we have to change that policy ahead of time? Or can we make an exception right now? Because I understand where she's coming from, that she wants to get advertising and that, and that is gonna be a significant amount of money.
I totally get what you're saying, yes. Um, I don't see why we, we have the authority to do. I mean, that's within our pay grade, so we could do that if we so desire.
So I could just make a motion to allow the Friends of Castleton Rec to allow consumption of beer and wine at their cash bash as long as they have a licensed and insured, what's the word I'm looking for?
Caterer.
Caterer.
I, I would recommend that you say a one-time exception until the, the policy's been reviewed and changed if needed, something like that.
I will disregard my last motion.
You're gonna rescind your motion?
I'm gonna rescind my motion, and I would make a one-time ex- exemption for the Castleton Friends of Rec to serve beer and wine at their cash bash uh, Saturday, June seventh. As long as they have a licensed caterer. Does that work?
I think so.
And insurance.
And insurance.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to allow the Castleton Friends of Rec a one-time exemption for alcohol use at their cash bash in June. Any discussion? Bob, do you have discussion? If you don't, I do.
Oh, go ahead, Jack, go ahead.
All right, um, I think it was brought up in previous meetings about possibly requesting or requiring a two-drink limit. I'm not sure that's a necessary, but I do think that we need to be sure that this is done in a responsible manner. So, um, I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion and what everybody's opinion is. I think that, uh, the this isn't gonna be a occasion where everyone's wanting to go, wants to go get plastered and published and do
I, I think whenever, whenever we come up with a facility use agreement, we need to figure something out, out along those lines that leaves us an option.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that most people that would attend this event would be responsible in their, in their consumption. I don't doubt that for a second. I just wanted to throw it out there so that it's been said.
Of course, the caterer has to have insurance and, uh, a registered bartender in the first place, and there's responsibility, their part too.
Yeah, they hold the liability, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, that being said, if this motion passes, do you want to reach out to Mary, or do you want me to?
Again, again, I can follow up with this, on this thing anyway.
She's not here right now, so if you can reach out to her on that, assuming this motion passes or fails, she needs to be notified one way or the other. Any more discussion, Bob? Are you good?
No, I'm good.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm gonna call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Yay.
Motion passes, three yay, one nay. We're gonna move on. Tandem, dump, dump truck financing. I think this is your show, Mike.
It is, yep. Um, so it before you is a spreadsheet and uh, some, uh, amortization schedules from M and T Bank for a five-year loan lease under our loan lease um, line of credit with them to fund or to finance the, uh, tandem that's at HP Fairfield. Uh, I, I provided, um, four scenarios. And I, I included what the interest would be over that period. And what I'm recommending is a five-year lease. We put a hundred thousand dollars down out of the Highway Department's equipment fund. That first payment will be made on July first, the beginning of the fiscal year. With an interest rate of four, four point eight, four percent. And that reduces the amount of interest that we're gonna pay over time, and that's kind of the, to fit into the hundred thousand dollars that we have that goes into that each year, that, that what's the way it's been budgeted, so that we can have two payments going at the same time, so we have the loader that we're paying for till next year it's completed, paid off, and we have the backhoe which is about seven thousand dollars. This one, if you look at the amortization schedule for the hundred thousand dollars, which is on the, next to the last page. The, the payment is fifty-four thousand dollars a year for that, and that will fit into our budget.
This is the truck we've already agreed to purchase, correct?
Correct, because sitting at the dealer now, they're just looking.
They want their money?
They want to fill their pockets, so, um.
Well, we've agreed to buy it, and
And, and instead, I mean, I looked, I looked back at the, the minutes from that meeting, it does say M and T Bank and all that, it's just there was no formal, yes, we'll we'll finance it for five years, um, and we'll put the hundred thousand dollars, the first payment will be a hundred thousand dollars, and that leaves We'll finance it for five years, um, and we'll put the a hundred thousand dollars, the first payment will be a hundred thousand dollars, and that leaves. Through the, with, with all the payments that have to get made next year for the loader. This hundred thousand dollars and the, um. Backhoe, it'll leave a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in the reserve. And remember, we have to add in the seventy-five thousand dollars that the voters added to that for this year, that, that includes that.
So what you're really asking us to do is pass this resolution?
Yes, and I, um. I, I think you want to see that, that, that the one I am recommending. Is a little, a smidge, like, what, four hundred dollars more than. If we put, if we paid the dealer fifty thousand and then we did our first payment of fifty thousand, so it's still a hundred thousand dollars that's gonna come out of our coffers. And it, but it's cleaner to not to have to deal with two different.
Is this some misprint? On the bottom one, we've got two eighty-nine, eight, five, one on all of them except for the fifty down and fifty down. It says two thirty-nine, eight, fifty-one.
Because we would pay fifty thousand, if you go back to the left.
Okay, yeah.
Fifty thousand would go to the dealer directly, so. And you can see it's, we'd be financing two thirty-nine, but we're paying almost the same amount of interest.
Yeah.
Because the rates are higher.
And from accounting point of view, the third, the third cleaner, right?
Yeah, so we're just dealing with the bank.
Yeah. Mary Lee, would you like to spend some money tonight? I spend a lot of money for the town.
Are you sure?
I wanna pay the heat going freezing.
Heat is on here too, I checked.
No.
Heat is on.
I think the floor heats up.
So, do I need to read this?
Yeah, the, the.
The following resolution was offered for adoption by the Town of Castleton, Vermont by select board member Rob Steele. Resolved by the Select Board of the Town of Castleton to approve the purchase and lease of a twenty-twenty-five. International H V six thirteen, six by four tandem date dump truck. From H P Fairfield in Hopkinton, Hopkin, Hopkinton, New Hampshire. Be used for transportation of material and plowing to maintain the Town of Castleton roads and streets. The cost of this equipment is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, which the Town of Castleton, Vermont. The lease through a tax-exempt municipal lease through M and T Bank. At the conclusion of the lease, the Town of Castleton will own the equipment for one dollar. The motion to adopt foregoing resolution was seconded by select board member.
Mary Lee.
Roll call for adoption of this follows.
Then I have to pass the call roll.
Yep.
So it's been moved and proposed that we accept this resolution and it's been seconded. So is there any more discussion on this resolution before we proceed with a roll call vote?
Should we pass the hat around and see if we can knock it down a little bit more here or?
You couldn't even get a damn spear to fire up you.
So no more discussion, um. I vote aye. Bob Spalding?
I vote aye.
Mary Lee Harris?
Aye.
Rob Steele?
Aye.
Mark Brown is not present. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. They'll be happy to get it off their lock. They're gonna, they're gonna come and train us on it too.
That's good.
And they're, they're gonna help us calibrate the spreaders.
Can we send the Chevy down there and get it out, edit it in a short period of time?
They don't, we asked that.
Weed removal at Crystal Beach.
Uh, before you is another spreadsheet, um, and two quotes from Sinclair Commercial Diving Services who started doing, um. Some eradication of nuisance, um. I, I, I hesitate to call, I'll, I'll just say weeds. Um, they're not supposed to pull the indigenous, uh. Uh, which they left, but there, that was for the. Eurasian Mill Foil and for the willies that were out in front of the, the sailing camp and then at the swim area, it was. On weeds there too. I've asked them to expand that, uh, for this, uh, swim. Instructors, uh, stuff, because it's deeper off to the left side and they didn't really do that area is that, so when they're doing their, um, swim lessons that. They, they want to float out there to be able to tread water and something to do without being bogged down, cuz it's not deep enough in the other part either. So that's what the. That's what the, um. Quotes were for, and this, if you, if you agree and you make the motion, this money would come from. The, um, weed harvester reserve, um, it was designated. Um, way back when, when they sold the. Weed harvesters, that money sits in there. Uh, it can also be used for stabilization of the bank, uh, Sucker Brook, which we did. Like three years ago, they did some plantings out there and Hillary, I talked to Hillary Solomon, they'll come back and help us with that, uh, but this is just for the weed pulling. So I've asked that the board approve that and he'll, he'll start pulling, um. He's, I think he said in May before the beach opens up, uh, to give the plants, anything that's gonna grow some time to be able to grab a hold of the roots and pull it out. Cuz it's all hand pulling.
I know a lot of the dash permitting that's done throughout the state requires them to start much later for fish spawn. Um. I would like to see it later.
Okay. Um.
I can look, I don't have a permit on my phone, but I can look up what Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah.
Has for a recommendation on that.
I dealt with that at the crystal, at the Little Ridge, I had to wait until a certain day.
Yeah, I believe it was, I believe it was June, June first, they were looking for, but it was in July for a while, but it's kind of gone back and forth, but I would prefer to wait.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they have, I don't think.
The hand pulling.
That they have to, but that's, that's what I would prefer to see.
Um. I'm not sure when swim lessons start, um, just wanted to get it, it done before the swim lessons start so that. It can be ready to go, but, um, whatever you, whatever you make for motion.
That's, that's just my opinion.
I wouldn't think swim lessons before school was out, no.
I wouldn't either.
No, cuz, cuz it's, and, and it's in hand, goes in hand, in hand with the adventure camp.
Which doesn't start until July.
July, so wait till June first, doesn't seem like a big issue.
I don't think that's gonna be hard to accommodate your desire there.
Okay.
So if you would care to make a motion.
I would make a motion to approve. The sum of twelve hundred dollars from quote number two oh one to Sinclair Commercial Diving Services. For the handful service of ten hours to hand pull lily pad regrowth around sailboat area. And hand pull E W M and other nuisance plants from the sailboat area to the dock area. Along with quote number two oh two to Sinclair Commercial Diving Services. To hand pull service for ten hours to extend the Crystal Beach Swim Area and hand pull the other nuisance plants. As long as it is after June first.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Moving on to. Relling County, um. Mutual aid agreement for municipal equipment.
This, this program, we participated, I think this is now the third or fourth year. Um, with this program, we really haven't had to exercise it in any kind of formality of. We had a major storm come in and we had to call in other people to help. Um, it's been more informal, whereas if we have a truck down or a piece of equipment down, Jeff has reached out to. Uh, Polton and Fairhaven or West Rutland. Asked for help and they do the same for us, so it's kind of informal there, but this formalizes, formalizes it if there's a declared emergency or anything like that, that people can recover costs. Um, so. Uh. I would recommend that the board continue to participate in this, um. Rutland Regional Planning Commission Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement and, uh. And then there's a designated officials.
You are the designated official last time I knew.
I was, I am, I guess, yes.
So do we need to nominate you as the primary aiding and requesting official and then nominate an alternate?
And I would recommend that you, um. Jeff be the. Al- alternate aiding official, uh, the highway foreman. And then the primary requesting official would be me as the road commissioner and he as the highway foreman.
On both cases, you would be the primary aiding and requesting official and Jeff Davidson would be the primary aiding. An alternate requesting official?
Maybe, maybe the alternate aiding and alternate requesting.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Correct.
Um, wanna take a stab at this?
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
You made a motion that. Mike Jones be primary aiding official. With the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Public Works Mutual Agreement. And Jeff will be alternate aiding official. Primary requesting official, again, Mike Jones. Alternate requesting official and Jeff.
Would you also include in your motion that Mike Jones be authorized to sign the mutual aid agreement?
And Mike Jones would be authorized by the mutual aid.
Do what you need, Mike?
Yes. Thank you.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on the mutual aid agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye, aye.
Hey, you got that one, Mike?
Yep, Bob's a pirate.
Okay, liquor license approvals. I suggest we take these one at a time. Or, I mean, you know, you can do, Bob, if you dog all three of them, yes, et cetera, but I don't think we could do.
I would make a motion to approve a first-class restaurant bar license, third-class restaurant bar license. And an outside consumption permit to Cat Brett L L C doing business as the dog, or as doing business as the Bombazine Dog.
Thank you very much for coming, everybody.
Appreciate it, guys. Have a good night.
Learn a lot, will make a difference in the world.
Mike, I'll ring you up, uh.
You got it.
Ten, ten thirty-ish, I don't know what's it.
Thank you, David. All right, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but they were walking out.
I was done.
All right, so do I have a second? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I, I'm sorry, Rob. And I'm sorry.
Robin Mary Lee.
Mary Lee, thank you.
I'm gonna skip to the American Legion.
What do you, what say you, Bob?
I, it's, it's an aye for me too.
Okay, I didn't hear you if you said anything, sorry.
I didn't.
Okay, moving on.
You know, skip to the Legion.
Understood, I know why.
Um. I would make a motion to approve a first-class club license, third-class club license. And an outside consumption permit to the American Legion Cripples, Crippen Fellows Post Fifty.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this permit? Or license? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye.
Hey.
Now you have to make a motion.
Yeah, no, uh. I would make a motion to approve. Uh, second class li-. Second class license, a tobacco license and a tobacco substitute endorsement. To B E E J J Incorporated doing business as Castleton Corners Deli.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would like to.
Go ahead.
I would like to see them get caught up on their taxes and their sewer bill.
Prior to. So when does their current license expire? Do we know that? I didn't bother doing a deep enough dive on this.
Sorry.
Because they're, uh.
I looked and honestly, I, I didn't really see where I could find it anywhere.
Was there twenty-two thousand dollars in arrears in their payments?
Uh huh. And I have a.
Hard time, I think that you and I are on the same page here. I'm having a hard time saying yes to this if they can't make an arrangement with. Our tax collection department. As to how they're gonna get caught up. But it's been eighteen months. Since the payments been made.
April twenty-ninth is. The last one that has a date on it, the tobacco substitute, says license end dates twenty-ninth of April.
Then if they can make an arrangement with you to your satisfaction, Mike, prior to next. Um. Next meeting, we can readdress this. If they can't make an arrangement with you to your satisfaction, then. This board may or may not be willing to approve a license. At this point, I'm gonna call the vote.
Well.
After, after we've all made suggestions or discussion, but I'll, I'll call the vote tonight and if it fails, then, uh. They're gonna need to make an arrangement with you.
Well, I could change the motion to where it would be approved. Pending they get caught up on their.
I would prefer not to do that. I would prefer to see if Mike can make an arrangement with them to his, his satisfaction. And then we'll readdress it at this point in time. I'm not telling you which way I'm gonna vote, but.
We, we have a payment plan that we offer to people and depending on how bad or how far they're in arrears, that's how much they have.
So we could make a motion that. As long as they agree to a payment plan that's accepted by the town manager.
Or full.
Paid in full or a payment plan.
You could, I guess you can amend your motion to have that contingency.
And then we wouldn't have to look at it, well, we may or may not have to look at it again.
Well, these licenses will expire if they can't make an arrangement. I think that in any case, we need to. I, I prefer, this is, let me tell you my opinion.
We'll just wait in my mouth.
My opinion is to, that we should deny this application at this point in time and if they can reach an arrangement with Mike, we'll be happy to readdress.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
All of them.
All in favor of approving these licenses? Or Bob, do you have any discussion before we move on?
I just wanna ditto everything you said, Dick. I don't even think we should be voting on it, but.
I think we should vote it. My opinion is that we're, I'm gonna call the vote and you vote your conscience and then we'll go from there because we have a motion and a second and we have to vote on it.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna call all, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mary Lee?
What's the motion?
That we approve their license. That we approve a license for, uh. Second-class licenses.
No arrangements.
With no arrangements. Bob?
No.
Nope. Bob?
No.
I vote no. That's four noes. Motion fails. I think everyone's clear on what needs to happen to, for them to proceed and retain their license.
Oh, also John.
Yeah, if they can make arrangements, you know. And then you can come back to the board at the next meeting before their license expires.
Yeah.
And if they have an arrangement that satisfies you, then this board may or may not approve it. Fair enough?
All right, you think 100%.
Okay, uh, manager's report.
Uh, I'm gonna defer it back to you. Um, I, my primary focus in this. Lock is to say there's a financial audit in your packet. Um, that. I, I would encourage you to look at it and either. Make some time to come in and see me or I'll come see you, however you want it to work and or our, our accountant. Um, if you wanna talk to him, but it's done, um, I signed the engagement letter. Because there's not, all I'm doing is signing it, saying that, you see this, like I'm saying. Jim Thomas, um, so, but it's there, um. It's been a long process, a learning process for our accountant. I think that he'll be better off for it next year or has he? Had some pain, you know, going through it this year. Not that it was pain, like he didn't know what he was doing, it's just new.
Yeah.
Um, and not going through it before with a government-type audit, so, um. Lot of, lot of good lessons learned and, uh, we also got hit with a single audit. Because we spent over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money, so then on top of that, he had to learn that one too, so, um.
There's only one way to learn.
I said, if you're drinking the fire hose, you just keep going, right? So, um, but. Barring that, um. If you had any questions on my report, and I'm sorry, Bob, I'm not sure if you got to, to read it, cuz I know you had taken off before I put it in the mailbox. Um.
I read a lot of it through the emails, but I don't have any major questions, no, I'm good.
I think some of the takeaways, I think, uh, that I'd like to make is that we have some grants that we're working on this year, um, Moscow Road, two grants onto that road. South Street Trussell, that was advertised, um, to. Um, Moscow Road, two grants onto that road, South Street Trussell, that was advertised, um, to put that up to bid. Um, we got the South Street Sidewalk project that we're still planning on going forward for the, for this year, for this summer. Um, and then the stormwater at East Crystal Ha, East and West Crystal Haven, which I have a meeting this week with um, Brandon Martin from Stone Environmental. If anybody would like to be there, I'll let you know when we, we haven't finalized the time yet. And then we have another stormwater meeting for the village school one, also this week with Brian Birch from Fossett O'Neil, and Hillary Solomon will be at both of these. It's kind of an IPR, an in-progress review where we're at. And I'll let you, the board members know.
Yeah, can you shoot me an email and let me know?
Let me know as well.
Yeah.
I can accommodate it.
Um, and I did, I did engage with, uh, Devin Neary from the Regional Planning Commission about, uh, champion, championing, championing, um, the, uh, working with us to postpone the paving through the village until we can get the stormwater issues done, and we don't have, they pave it, and then we tear it all back up again. But Hillary and Brian, I met with them to add in the segment that comes from Elm Street to over in front of the library, and then down to the new connection that we made down by the west side entrance into the library. Um, because we need to catch space in there, and it, they, they counted the phosphorus, but they never put the infrastructure into the, into the plan, so that's one of the things that, um, she's gonna research to see if she can do it. Sounds like it's pretty promising. Turning your questions.
Just a comment, for what it's worth, I took a walk up the South Street Sidewalk um, ju- just as recently as yesterday, and it's in pretty rough shape. I really doubt anyone could get a wheelchair up there. You might get a motorized scooter up there, it wouldn't be easy, but there's no way somebody's gonna hand-push a wheelchair up that with any degree of comfort, at least. It would be a struggle.
Yeah, and that's, so I talked to Merrill today about that. Um, Nedra and, when Mary Jo's there tomorrow, and Nedra and Mary Jo, between the two of them will give me all the information that I need, um, to give to Merrill so the, um, deed research can be done, and the, for the temporary construction easements, they need about ten feet, so that, because we're working out of the right of way. So, there's like seven, I think it was seven properties that are impacted by it. So, that's the, the big thing that we're, we need to get done to move this thing forward.
Anything else on the managers' report?
I didn't have anything.
Bob, you're all set, right?
I think I'm all set, other than there was a couple of things on there, Mike, you needed board approval on. Did you wanna discuss that, or no?
Oh, yes, thanks, Bob. Yes, good catch. Um, so. Find them here.
I thought we already prepared those.
Uh, Depot Terrace, one was, we've already gone past the Board of Sewer Commissioners, and the Depot Terrace, um, and I got an email today from, uh, Jeff Lewis, saying that he was successfully able to get something on the P-list, and he said this project, and he I don't think he meant Depot Terrace, but that's what the email I'd sent him was about, and I think he was talking about Route Thirty.
Yeah.
Um, so I gotta get clarification on that. Um. And there, there was a thing about, instead of lining the pipe, we already talked about that. Sorry, I'm gonna spy too, this.
Yeah, I did.
There's one, there's two things I know I'm gonna come to that I wanted to talk about. Um. So it starts on. Wow, that's a lot, I didn't realize how long that was. Um, on page eighteen, at the very top, action needed. So, we're gonna, we're coming to that point where the board, uh, all the ARPA funds that we had to dump into the general fund, um, to protect it, uh, before the end of last fiscal year, or last calendar year, um, it's gonna, decisions have to get made before the end of, this fiscal year, to make a resolution that carry that beyond. Otherwise, we lose all the ARPA, you know, that availability, but on that spreadsheet, I'm not sure if anybody has a copy. Um, one was on that, was five thousand dollars, um, of ARPA interest for Dewey Field, and after being down there for, today, I was down there with Casellas and John Alexander and the Highway Foreman, and it won't take long heat-up money to fix some of this stuff up. Um, there, a lot of it's our own, like the stone and the, but we have some signs we gotta put up, and I'd like to, I'd ask that the, and I guess a couple of trees that we gotta take care of that we, we can't really do. Um, we can do some of it, I guess, limit, but, um, ask the board to approve the five thousand dollars that was in the ARPA spreadsheet for, uh, for Dewey Field, and then at the same, in the same breath, uh, there was one on here for three thousand, I believe it was, for Hydville Field.
T-ball field.
Oh, T-ball, yeah, the T-ball field. So I got, I was able to get Graham Trudeau agreed to do some volunteer work with his equipment at the T-ball field. Um, Casellas is doing some work at Dewey Field, plus our guys are hauling some stuff, but that, that money would, if it could be obligated, we can get a lot of this stuff done that needs to get finished.
We already had it set aside for this anyway, right?
Yeah, it's already, it was, been on that whole list that was.
An earmark for it, but we haven't actually, uh.
Haven't actually voted on it.
I just have to make a motion to approve the use of three thousand dollars from the interest from the ARPA funds to facilitate the completion and rehabilitation of the T-ball field, and five thousand dollars.
In ARPA interest.
Five thousand in ARPA interest for Dewey Field.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to obligate a total of eight thousand dollars from ARPA interest for, uh, for, uh, the T-ball field and Dewey Field. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's probably long overdue project there.
Oh, I'll tell you, the, the energy.
Bob, what, what say?
Aye, aye, aye for me, aye.
Four nothing, Mike, okay.
I appreciate that, board. Um, I, I agree with you, Rob, that there's, it's overdue, um, but the energy of the volunteers that showed up to work on the baseball fields, um, this weekend, this past weekend, um, and people now saying they'll do volunteer work with their equipment. It, this, we have the potential right now to make those two places, and, and Hydville, so three places, T-ball, really nice-looking places, and a lot of it is the community support, and the, they can say they're a part of it. And I think it'll, it'll look really good when we're done.
So I was pretty pleased with everything that I've done.
Yeah.
I took a look at all three. Well, we didn't do anything at the T-ball field, but I was there when Mike talked to Graham, just accidentally, I didn't know that was happening, I just kinda stopped him to say hello to Mike, and Graham showed up and he didn't, he hesitated, what, about three microseconds before he said yes?
Yeah.
So, kudos to Mr. Trudeau, and kudos to all the other.
Yeah, they've done an awesome job, for sure.
And for him trying to go out and make things happen. Thank you, Mike.
Yep, everybody's done very.
Yeah, I think, it just, it's gonna be great to look back, and the community can say that they had hands in this stuff, and it wasn't just done, you know, so, it's more prideful, I guess, when you see that.
All right, we're gonna move on to purchase orders.
Yes.
I'm gonna find you the original, Rob, but you can start on your list if you want.
Well, we're a little ahead of schedule, do you think it should take a little bit more time?
Absolutely not. We always find a way to.
You know what I gotta say to that, Rob, Steve?
Uh, select board agendas are just like household budgets. Your expenses are always first to meet your income.
All right, so you wanna do purchase orders?
This is all of them. You're missing one, let me know.
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three nine one seven to Pete's Tire Barn for the sum of four thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, PO for the tire greater, for the greater tires. All in, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, yep, aye.
Gotcha. Okay, moving on.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three eight three seven to Pete's Tire Barn for tires for the new Holland tractor and mower for the sum of two thousand twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Got it.
I would make a motion to approve purchase, purchase order number zero five three eight hundred to Hagov for the sum of four thousand dollars for their service and support from three thirty twenty-five to three thirty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to approve the purchase order to Hagov. Any discussion? I have a question. Are we saving four thousand dollars in labor and heartache by using this program?
I doubt it.
Then you need to review that.
I mean, that's my personal, I, I guess I, I will review it, but it's my personal opinion, it just, I just haven't seen where it's.
Better.
We, we pay a lot, people pay a lot online for things that are on tax-related, it's like rec, rec, you know, transfer station permits, but, I don't know, it's seems to me like, I'm just not a fan of the, the program, so maybe I'm a little biased. Um, but, I, I will, I will see. I don't know how we prove that. Um, it's, it's because you have to have some data before to kinda compare it against, and we really didn't.
Well, we're in our, what, second year with this?
Yeah.
Or first?
Second year.
Second year, so we're, so we're entering into our third year. I would say that by the end of our third year, we better decide whether we want to continue or not.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but.
I'd rather spend.
If I, I would rather spend, I'm not in favor of spending four thousand dollars to save three thousand. If you know what I'm saying.
So, just so the boards are aware, Nemrick is our accounting software. I met with, um, Cynthia Stoddard from Nemrick. She is going to take a look at the transfer station and the beach to see if what we're trying to do with, with, or what we're doing with Hagov, Nemrick can already do for point-of-sale systems, and if that's the case, I wanna go.
Yeah.
Now Christine is, the tax payments, um, you know, not a lot of people use Hagov for their taxes, in my opinion, so. Um, I, I, I do, I'd love to do this analysis, cause I.
Well, let's do this analysis within the next, end of the next, you know, before this goes down again.
Try to get it done.
Well, I'll get that when I'm sleeping in the office.
All your free time, yeah, I, I realize that you got, you know, a few things to do.
Yeah, no, but I think it's worth the, the effort to put into this one.
But we'll figure out how to do a deep dive. Maybe we can get one of the select board members to help you do that dive.
All right.
Maybe, at this point in time. Any, any discussion on this, Bob, before we call a vote?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye, aye.
Arg. That too, move on.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three seven nine nine to Aaron King for painting the conference room. Uh, town meeting office, town manager's office, or kitchen, back entryway and stairwell for the sum of two thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He did a little bit more than that, just so you know.
Mark, uh, Bob, what's your name, Bob?
Uh, yeah, aye.
Your name's, okay, aye, got it.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three seven six four to Fabian Earth Moving for road repair on Route Thirty for the sum of twenty-four hundred and fifty dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye, aye.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three eight one seven to North Star Fireworks Displays for the Fourth of July fireworks for the sum of thirteen thousand.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
You have.
There's a comment, so the, the, this year, they're scheduled for the fifth of July with the parade, and then the, uh, rain day of the sixth, so Saturday, Sunday.
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three one zero six to Trees Incorporated for North Road tree and brush removal for the sum of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye.
I appear to be short two purchase orders here, Dick.
Okay, then we're gonna dig deeper. Usually they have, um. Yeah, I hear those, this one's got a bunch of supporting documentation.
I would make a motion to approve, we're still gonna be shy on, I'm on it. Make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three eight three four to Florence Crush Stone for stone for the sum of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the stone?
I just had a quick question.
Go ahead, Bob.
I just wondered if this is kinda crazy, but who is Florence Crush Stone? Is that, is that coming out of South Wolfingford, or is this somebody else, is this?
Yeah, it's in West.
The Whipple Halls?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just, I've never heard of these people before.
I think it's, um, if I remember correctly, it's like, that Casellas, they own that.
They very well might.
Casellas.
I know the.
I didn't know if it was Casellas or. I was thinking it was Markowski's, but, yeah, okay.
I think it's Casellas.
Okay.
Uh, did you? We have, we have not called that question yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye, aye.
Um, before you start the next one, the number's wrong. The HP Fairfield, you just voted that, and that thing was, it's two eighty-nine.
We haven't voted on it yet.
I know, I just, but, just, oh, okay, I'll shut up then, because it's, the number's wrong on the PO.
So.
So we gotta get the right number, which is in this file. Do you have it handy?
Yeah.
If you don't, I'll date. Oh, it's right there, there's a copy right there, the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So this is the number, two eighty-nine eight fifty-one?
Yep. That's with all the, that has all the ads that, that the town approved.
So you can do a can you find that out, just one line through it, and write your correct number, please? Then I'll initial it when I approve it.
Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three eight two three to HP Fairfield for the new international plow truck for the sum of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, uh, for the PO for the plow truck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Bob?
Aye.
We can move on to warrants.
What else?
Yes, move on to warrant.
Was make a motion to approve warrant number zero four one four R for the sum of seven hundred dollars. Warrant number zero four zero seven for the sum of forty-eight thousand five hundred and three dollars and sixty-five cents. Warrant number zero four one one for the sum of seven thousand fifty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Warrant number zero four one four for the sum of two hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Warrant number zero three two seven P for the sum of nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Warrant number zero four zero three P for the sum of nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. And warrant number zero four one zero P for the sum of nineteen thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, approve the warrants. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Bob?
Aye, aye.
Motion passes. Um, Bob, when, at your earliest convenience, can you go by the town office and sign these plus the other document we have with it?
Yep, just have them, Mike, leave them in my box. Is that appropriate?
Yep. While you're signing those, um, Mr. Chairman, I think in the blue folder, you'd already made the appointment for the fire warden, but after you did that, we got a form, official form to sign that's in that packet.
Alright.
Well, glad when we got married, my name got shorter anyway.
Mike, can you answer a question for me?
I can try to.
Um, do we, do we, did we go pick up that Florence Crush Stone? Did we pick it up with our own trucks or do they deliver it?
No, we picked it up.
We picked it up.
Correct.
Elsa, Rob?
Mm-hmm, like, I think there's three different sizes there.
Have we ever looked into the cost difference of having them truck up?
I don't know if you did this year or not, I don't know if there's, normally we do, we see what's in the cost for them to deliver it.
So I think that one also gets Mark Brown's signature, since I believe he was present when we made that appointment.
Hey, hey, Bob, let me, let me follow up on that to make sure that we picked it up. I, I, the last time when I had a conversation, I thought we were, but I'll, I'll make, I'll follow up with Jeff and I'll, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I just, I don't know. I got some other stops on that, it's okay.
Okay. Um, one of the things that they didn't want to do is they didn't wanna buy slate, put in the roads. This is that.
Oh, no, no, I, no, I understood that. I just, I just assumed that Haddock's or Brown's don't sell that kind of stone that he got, so.
No, we have an individual that's angry at us because we didn't buy it. We don't wanna put shirts.
They don't, they don't sell the P stone that he uses on the dirt roads, I don't believe, so.
No, but they have a product that they, they believe is maybe, this is good, but everything that we've learned and go to class on says, don't put slate in the roads, cause it gets broken down, it turns into clay.
Yeah, it turns to dust and stuff, yeah, I understand.
And it's impervious.
You certainly don't wanna put slate on gravel roads.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that's where we put the sand. And that's been.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, we try to support local vendors at every moment that we can. Sometimes we've spent a hundred dollars to, more than just to use a local vendor and just, but it's a product, doesn't fit the application, we shouldn't use it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are going to move on. We're moving on to select board comments. Mary Lee, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I have a concern. It's on the direct committee rep. If we put these two people on we're barely Castleton over out of Castle. What if a Castleton member leaves or whatever reason, got run over by a truck or whatever? Just gonna throw it so you're not gonna have more Castleton people.
True.
What do we do? If then it would not be.
Throw somebody else off. Well, at this point, I think it's a risk I'm prepared to take, um, simply because, that being said, I think that the, the non-resident members on our rec commission that we currently have or would like to join truly have the best interest of Castleton in mind. So I think that uh, having them on the board, even if it's a evenly split board for a short period of time until someone else steps up. Cause it's really unfortunate that, you know, Fred Smith got hit by a truck and I'm really sad that that happened, but maybe Fred's brother Bill will step up and join the, join the commission.
Just wondering.
I think we all know how tough it is to get volunteers, so.
Well, I, I still think that's a risk I'm prepared to take. I'm only twenty percent of the board though, so.
Mr. Chairman, is that, is that true, the planning commission? Majority has to be from in the municipality?
I think so, but I'm not gonna guarantee that. I, I can't speak to that without seeing the my actual roles and rules and procedure for that board.
Why would somebody wanna be on the planning commission that didn't live in the town?
Yeah, Thomas, um, when, when he was here, there was somebody that wanted to be on the planning commission, but they, it had to be there was a question, cause he lives in Florida, I mean, and he.
All residency.
But isn't he, does he speak Florida for?
No, so I'm saying, so there was a, but, but then the majority of the board was still from the town.
He did resign. That's all I, that's my only concern.
At, at this point, we have, on the rec commission, we have three members that are residents and two that are not. So if we add two more members, we would have four that are residents and three that are not. And like I said, that's a risk I'm prepared to take, but I understand your concern. And once again, though, I'm only one-fifth of the board, so. If the other four of you are not, if the other four of you are not prepared to take that risk, then we won't. Anything else?
No, cause we have like eight thousand in writing or whatever, that he wants to anyway.
Agreed.
Yeah, I sent him an email letting him say, he needs to send him, submit a letter. I don't know if I can reach talk to him.
Rob?
I think I'm good.
Bob, you got anything tonight?
Um, no, but I just got a quick question.
That's close enough.
Does Jim, does Jim Thomas own property in Castleton or does he not?
Yes, he does.
Okay, well, that statement a few minutes ago was a crock of you know what, so.
Not necessarily a question of residency, legal residency and wear your heart and hang your boots all summer long are two different things. He may live out of town for more than six months of the year or however residency is actually determined. That's, I think, what the real story is, and that's a legal thing. We both know that Jim's heart and mind is in town, here in, here in Castleton, no question about that.
So that, that's fine, Mr. Chairman, but I'm gonna agree with, disagree with you one hundred percent. He owns property in town. He has every right to be on the planning commission.
I didn't say he didn't. I just said that they legally may say his residency is not in town, that's all.
That's fine, that's fine.
I agree with you that he, he is on the board and I'm totally okay with that and he deserves to be. I'm just saying that they legally may say he doesn't live in town, that's all. Doesn't change what, where I think it should be either. We agree on that, Bob, just so you know.
That's fine, yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
I have nothing. Do we need an executive session?
I'd like an executive session on personnel.
Before we do that, we need, we need to go through some action items. Um, I already scratched off the one about the alcohol policy on town land, so there's, we all need to review the annual audit and go forth to Mike and or Joe with questions. And then uh, I'm going to do a research on the Green Mountain Director Price with Jeff. And if anyone has any memories of water before the sidewalk was built and cares to share that with me, I would appreciate it. Um.
Dick, Dick, maybe, maybe, Dick, can you're there?
I'm here.
Maybe just, just keep John Lober in the back of your mind. He, he give you, that or Joe Smith, they can give you a lot of insight, I'm sure.
Good point. John Lober's still around, isn't he?
He is, he is.
I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
Um, do you have his number? I do not.
I, I don't think I do, but if I do, I will text, text it to you.
Alright, well, with a little bit of research on, you know, I, I'm sure if I do, I can find it if I, I know I don't have it, but it's, I can find it.
Okay.
I'm gonna actually have to, and I'm gonna reach out to Mike and John tomorrow about making sure that Jennifer Morrison Taylor has access to the building when she needs it, assuming that they know's needs to meet your approval, Mike, okay?
Yeah.
And uh, that's it. That's all I got for action items. Anybody else have anything?
The other one is the UDR, which we put, what, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth of May, I think, is our
Me, twenty-sixth.
Today, when we hopefully have all five of us in the room at the same time.
Yes.
I mean, I realize, Bob, Bob, you can't forecast your schedule out that far, can you?
Uh, no, not yet, but I can, I can look into it.
Yeah, look into it and we're gonna try to, try to uh, make a final decision on the UDR on May twenty-sixth.
Is that a regular meeting, Dick? Is that a regular meeting?
It's a regular meeting.
Okay.
And if we need to do some preliminary discussions prior to that and other meetings, prior to that, we can, but we will not have a full board. I will be out, I may be able to zoom in on the next meeting, I won't guarantee that. And Mary Lee will not be present on the one after that, first one in May.
Okay.
The sewer ordinance, what's your, uh, what's your direction for me on the, bring, when you wanna bring that back?
Well, I think we need to, to, um, we need the response from our attorney first. After that, um, you were gonna look up the current regulation, I believe, to see if that is a.
I'm hoping to have all that done before the next meeting. But when I can get it to you, I couldn't give you a specific date.
If this board is prepared to take action and I think I already know where everything's gonna go, or I think we all pretty much have a consensus already.
Yeah.
So if this board doesn't take any action that's unanticipated, I don't, do not need to be present at the meeting.
I wanna look at the page eleven, section five oh two.
Right.
I might have you see if you can ask the attorney how she interprets that, because that that particular one that Bob brought up, that changes everything a hundred percent.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna, yeah, but that's on the action item for the sewer commission.
Yeah.
Discuss that.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, you know, there's nothing wrong with making sure we all know what's going on, um. But if, yeah, unless there's something really weird and strange that comes out of that, whatever the four of you decide if I'm not present.
You're gonna run.
Because we all have, no, I won't say that. We're pretty, we're pretty rational usually.
Like to think we'll stay that way.
Um, that's all I got for action items. Executive session, do we need one?
Personnel?
Personnel. Thank you very much, everybody.
Bye.
We need to make a motion to go into executive session.
We do.
Make a motion to go into executive session at nine oh four. With the personnel to include the town manager and four board members.
We have a second. Been moved in second to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries forward or nothing, um.
Make a motion, we come out of the executive session, no action taken at nine thirty-six.
Second, been moved in seconded, come out of the executive session. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob?
Aye.
Make a motion, we adjourn at nine thirty-six.
Well, I mean, seconded, been moved in seconded that we adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
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 We're supposed to be doing.
Rob?
Aye.
Hey.
Robert, you locked it, at least that, aye, Bob?